Welcome. It is 5 o'clock on Monday, November 4th, 2024. This is a meeting of the City Council of Cape Girardeau. Welcome to everyone. Thank you for being here. We will begin tonight with an invocation by Pastor Zach Strong of Christ Church of the Heartland and then follow that with our Pledge of Allegiance. If you all would please rise and join us. Thank you. Sounds a lot worse out there than I think it is. Creepy. Okay, sorry. We have no study session or presentations tonight. Council, any communications and reports?
I'm going to go ahead and encourage everybody here in this audience and anybody out in Cape Girardeau to make sure that they exercise their right to vote tomorrow. We've got a major ballot initiative on the ballot here in the city of Cape Girardeau. Whether or not this future, this city grows, we will always need water. And every house, every household, every business, everybody will always have a constant need for water. And so whenever you go to the polls tomorrow, you will notice that there is a water initiative on the ballot for the city of Cape Girardeau for, to help us make improvements at our water plant, not just for next year, not just for the next five years, but for the next 30, the next 40, the next 50. Our current water plant is getting close to the century mark. So these are not small items that get turned over pretty quickly. These are large-scale items that last for decades and generations. And so please make sure whenever you go to the polls tomorrow, you consider that and you support Cape Girardeau in our initiatives to support our water plant and invest in our future. Additionally, like I said back before, our primaries that we had a few months ago, please make sure that you and everybody else that you know are getting your information from solid sources. There is a student in my office who every Friday when he leaves from, leaves work, I tell him to make good choices and read primary sources. And I also encourage that with anything that is political. Look for those primary sources, look for well-written articles whenever you're, you're reading about candidates and making decisions because it is very important to read real information. There's a lot of fake information out there. And so inform yourself with all the good, real stuff. Aside from that, I look forward to seeing everybody. Pastor Strong, thank you for offering your facility as a polling place because for Ward 1, that is one of our major polling places. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd like to say so.
Okay, I'm going back to first grade, okay? So how many of you all went through a drive-through last month in October? Raise your hand. You went through a drive-through, you took your kid through a drive-through, somebody in your family went through a drive-through? Okay, so when people ask me, well, I don't know about increasing this water. And we get comments like, well, y'all paid for the stadium in the mall. Okay, let's be honest about it. You know how important water is? It's significant for your family and the generations to come. And what you do tomorrow will affect this city for decades to come. And I want to, only reason I bring up the poll about the Happy Meal, because I always bring that up. Significant, most water customers, 89%, can expect to see a monthly increase ranging in $8.19 to $13.89. Well, I can't pay that. Well, if you went through the drive-through and got you a Big Mac meal, you got $13 to have the quality of life for your family, for the small businesses and some of these big businesses in our community. Now, you want to say, what, the city needs to take care of this? Okay, well, we need you to meet us halfway and that's how people we serve. Why doesn't the city get state or federal grant money? I just want to read the facts. The Acceptable National Standard Affordability Index for Water is 1.0%. This means the average household using 5,000 gallons of water per month pays 1% of its income to pay the water bill. Various state and federal funding sources look at the city's AI to determine if residents are paying their part. The city's current AI is .76. Any mathematicians in here? Yes. So meaning our rates are too low to qualify for state, federal, and federal grants to help with our funding needs. So we need you to say yes tomorrow so we can go move forward and get those state and federal dollars. Some other things they say, well, the city staff talking to us, but they didn't telling us what to do. That's not their job. Their job is to give you the facts, to give you the information and to show up. And I've been to St. James with Trevor and, and he just shared the facts, but I had a chance to stand, stand up and say, hey, vote yes tomorrow. And you say, well, I can't afford it. If you went through the drive-through anytime this year, you can afford it. Okay, so I just kept it simple like that. Thank you.
I would just echo wonderfully put, by the way, wonderfully put. But we can't afford not to do it. That's a double negative, but you said, can't afford it. We can't afford not to do it. But I just echo everything there. I don't need to add on to. That was wonderful. But I guess what I wanted to share was, I wanted to give major props and shout-outs to our Parks and Rec Department. This is, I would say it's their busy time, but it seems like every month of the year is their busy time. But they just went through the haunted hall of horrors and they put that on and build it and they gathered together as a, as a staff and, and put that on for the community as an attraction. But then also, that then led into, I spent my whole weekend at Shawnee Park and for the huge soccer tournament that was there, 100, over 100 teams, I think. And just from all over the region, on top of our usual leagues that were going on and everything was packed. And then that then leads into this Thursday is the Parks and Rec Spaghetti Day at Arena Park. And I just wanted to encourage everybody to go out and support our Parks and Rec. Go get lunch there, go get dinner there, go get both lunch and dinner there. Get it for your work, your office. Go and support Parks and Rec and then also, in the meantime, get some good spaghetti or mascocholi. Thank you for all you guys do.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Well, they stole all my thunder, so I won't repeat that. But thank you, council. Said it, said it better than I could have said myself. Certainly, we always just encourage everyone to vote regardless of your opinions. It is a wonderful right that we have in this country and one we should not take for granted. So great opportunity tomorrow to exercise our freedoms. Next, we will move into regular, oh, excuse me. Sorry, we have several items for discussion tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to appear as an advisory board applicant? If so, you may approach the podium and speak on that. All right, seeing none, we will now have the consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we added 9, 10, 11, and 12, and of course, 13 for your review tonight. We'll start with number nine. Basically, what we have is an LNI agreement with Broadway Theater to install a marquee-style sign, canopy, and lights located at 805 Broadway. Number 10, we have an additional LNI agreement that we've established with homeowners at 807 and 813 Minnesota Avenue as part of the Minnesota Avenue and Highway 79 intersection improvement project. Number 11, we have an agreement with Nip Kelly to complete the Cape Rock Water Treatment Filter Gallery piping improvements, which is desperately needed and council approved that $9 million that we put out on the table that we saved over the years to start the process of trying to rehab the water treatment plan. Now, of course, number 12, the improvements for the 2023 asphalt overlay program are complete and we would like to finalize that final pavement to Apex paving. And finally, we're ready to accept the Bellevue Street extension. Mayor, that concludes the review.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Haskin. We will move into regular session and begin with the roll call vote. Ms. Conrad.
Mr. Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Kentrell? He's absent. Mr. Essex?
Here.
Mayor Kinder?
Here.
Mr. Presson?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
All right, thank you. Council, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move?
Second. Mr. Presson, Mr. Essex, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of the agenda then is stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. We have one public hearing tonight. I'll open the public hearing to consider a request for a special use permit for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a billboard at 3849 Business Park Place. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in that public hearing here tonight? All right, seeing none then, I will close that public hearing. We have a consent agenda before us, a little bit lengthy. Mr. Young, would you please read that?
Bill 24-104, in ordinance submitting Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding improvement of parking areas. Bill 24-104, in ordinance submitting Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding improvement of parking areas. Bill 24-105, in ordinance submitting Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding access management. Bill 24-105, in ordinance submitting Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding access management. Bill 24-106, in ordinance submitting Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding utilities. Bill 24-106, in ordinance submitting Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding utilities. Bill 24-107, in ordinance submitting Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding accessory structures and uses. Bill 24-107, in ordinance submitting Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding accessory structures and uses. Bill 24-108, ordinance authorizing the issuance of special tax bills for various properties for demolition of dangerous buildings located in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 24-108, in ordinance authorizing the issuance of special tax bills for various properties for demolition of dangerous buildings located in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 24-109, in ordinance accepting easements from various property owners for the Whitenhurst Sanitary Sewer relocation in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 24-109, in ordinance accepting easements from various property owners for Whitenhurst Sanitary Sewer relocation in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 24-110, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement with Broadway Theater LLC to place certain improvements at 805 Broadway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 24-111, resolution authorizing city manager to execute license and indemnity agreements with property owners along Minnesota Avenue as part of the Minnesota Avenue and Highway 74 intersection improvement project. Bill 24-112, resolution authorizing new manager to execute an agreement with Nip Kelly Equipment Company, Inc. for the Cape Rock Water Treatment Plant hydraulic bottleneck improvements.
All right, thank you, council. We have the consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Mr. Bliss?
Second.
Mr. Presson, any discussion? All in favor then of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That agenda carries. We have one item that was tabled from last meeting. So I move that we take from the table. Bill number 24-101, in ordinance granting a special use permit to Key Mack LLC for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a restaurant drive-through at 716 and 718 Broadway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. So that is now back on the table. In the past two weeks, I know staff has come up with a slightly different concept. And so I move that we accept those, that we make an amendment, excuse me, to Bill 24-101, to accept the proposed changes. And basically, those create a two-way situation at the north half of the block on the alleyway and create a one-way situation leading down southbound to Broadway on the southern half of the block. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Pulley, would you like to give us some detail about how this might move forward?
Do you need the map up now?
That'd be great if you can pull it up. We all have a copy.
Okay, this map was provided to the council earlier, approximately two weeks ago. It's got, it shows where the public parking is in blue. It also shows private entrances into homes and also into the alley. It also shows a private entrance behind the businesses from Sprig Street. There's yellow lines going from down the alley, up down the alley. There's a one-way that stops at the parking lot that goes to Broadway with "Do Not Enter" signs there on Broadway. It's two-way from the parking lot all the way back to Bellevue. That explains the map that was provided. That was one that was provided.
Okay. And can you show us on the map those, those white squares with the orange outline?
Yes, that, those are going to be signage for "Do Not Block." "Do Not Block" driveways.
Oh, okay, okay. So that's the amendment on the table. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment? If so, please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
David Atkins, 133 East Cape Rock Drive here in Cape Girardeau. I'm curious, one of the things that I have looked at on that I'm curious, one of the things that I have looked at on that, on the map is the area that is going to be two-directional. There is currently barely room for one direction. There certainly isn't room for two-direction. No, there's no way that two vehicles could meet in that short alleyway, in that narrow alleyway. And in order to make it wide enough, it would require the city purchasing or taking advantage of the area to the east of that, on the east side of that alleyway. And I'm curious what plans are, because I assumed that that was what was going to take place. But it doesn't seem logical that that can be a two-way area unless it's made wider. And if it's made wider, then that's going to require the city to either make use of some property or to purchase property. Otherwise, it's going to be chaos. There are better suggestions or there, there are better ways to deal with it. But I wasn't asked. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your, your thoughts and questions. Mr. Pulley, would you mind coming up? So just so we're all operating on the same page here, that alley is currently two-way.
Yes.
Throughout.
Currently, the alley is two-way from Broadway to Bellevue at the current.
And the original special use permit created a one-way situation traveling from north to south throughout the entire alleyway. The amendment that's on the table now is to allow the northern half of that alleyway to, to basically remain, keep the status quo, to remain two-way.
Yes, ma'am.
But to, but to create the one-way situation and allow for the, the drive-through on the side of the building.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you did have some discussion with those property owners because that, what Mr. Atkins brought up was a...
I contacted the property owners up and down the alley. Two property owners, Joe and Lee, were willing to donate their property to us. I had one property owner that would not sell nor donate the property to us, so we could not widen the alley.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment?
Hi, my name's Jim Mavers. I'm a resident at 727 Bellevue. I question, how do you get to the northern half of that alleyway without going through the Dollar General parking lot? If you're going north?
Well, I guess I would ask you how you do it currently.
You go, you turn left on the alley and go right up the alley.
I'm sorry, from where?
Off Broadway.
Oh, off Broadway?
Yes.
Yeah, you, this would not allow you to turn north into the alley.
So I don't see how this solves any problem with the one-way situation right by the building.
No, it definitely changes the, the southern half of that alleyway.
It changes the southern half. But how do you get, if you're on Broadway and you want to turn and get into the parking lot behind the proposed restaurant, how do you get there?
You would, you could enter from the north half, northern part, off of, what's the, Bellevue.
Bellevue, I live on Bellevue. A lot of people use that alleyway. And unfortunately, there was an accident of a lady walking up the alleyway Friday. And when she got to Bellevue, she was struck by a car. That is a very busy alleyway. And I'm just concerned about putting more and more traffic with this particular restaurant right there. I'm in favor of, I own downtown, I own Past Times Antiques. I have property on Main Street, property on Spanish Street, property in Jackson. So I'm familiar with developments, I'm familiar with this. I just don't see this as a logical solution. Why doesn't the restaurant consider a drive-up window in the back of the building where the parking lot's at and leave the alleyway the way it is now? Just like Subway on Sprig and Broadway. That's my concern is this is going to cause problems. Who's going to enforce the do not enter? Is that going to be a moving violation if someone turns right or turns north off of Broadway into that alleyway? Is that, are they going to get a ticket for going up the wrong way?
Well, that, that would be treated just as any other traffic issue.
I agree. But I also have two hard parking signs in front of my business downtown Cape and no one enforces those. So I'm just, I'm afraid that this is going to cause problems. So that's my concern as a resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to? Oh, several, okay.
Council, Mayor, my name is Joe Zorro. I live at 612 Devers Crossing. My predecessors, who owned this land before me, collectively dedicated it to the city of Cape Girardeau to be an alley. Greg Young, I, as a property owner, consented to it being used as an alley. I am notifying you, I do not consent in any way for the city to change the use of this alley to a drive-through, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to, there were several, yes.
My name's Brandon Beniotti, general manager of Tilt Roofing Construction, 29926 County Route 337. So we understand this whole alley is too, two-directional right now. And the drive-through, to put it in the back of the building, does not really work logistically and schematically for the restaurant. It really revises the whole floor plan. It's going to be a unique situation and there's going to be cost involved to relocate it. Now, what we have laid out here, we have agreed that we will put the kiosk on the backside of the building.
I'm sorry, what's a kiosk?
The order board, menu board, I'm sorry. And with Lee's cooperation, you know, with the use of the parking lot, that's where the drive-through will stack. That way, it does not take up alley space. But we'd like, we need to leave the drive-through window in the alley. That's why it becomes one-way at our building location, front to back. We feel it's a safer situation because we've been more mindful since we've been on site, watching the traffic go through. And really, the majority of the people that use, utilize the alley are customers coming out of Dollar General and going north on Bellevue. Occasionally, there is some that go south out of the alley onto Broadway. And very little, I think I've made in the past two weeks, which I have not been there 24/7, two to three cars come off Broadway north onto Bellevue, which I'm sure there's, we didn't sit there and take statistics, excuse me, statistics on it. But yeah, that's why the drive-through won't work on the backside of the restaurant because logistically just does not work for their setup. We just hope for cooperation with the property owners, that they can understand. And hopefully, on down the road, there is a, you know, we can widen that alley up to make people happy and maybe get an easement through Dollar General. But at this time, it's unavailable. You know, and it's, you know, people are looking at it as an inconvenience. You know, one inconvenience I run to is going down Main Street. Delivery trucks stopping on Main Street. You know, if you don't catch it in time, you're parked behind that delivery truck until oncoming traffic gets out of the way. You know, it's, it's the way of downtown life. I don't call and complain about anybody. I wish they had a better place, that these trucks can stop and unload. There's just inconveniences all over downtown Cape that we get accustomed to it. Is there any questions concerning?
Yeah, I have one, Brandon. So what you're proposing is, it sounds like is this map?
Yes, sir.
So where the cars would no longer stack down the alley, but within Lee's parking? Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And if that parking leave, I'm sorry, I don't mean to ask questions. That would have to be restripped, is that right? Because it's angled parking now, right?
Well, it would. And just to clarify, I don't, that's not a decision the city, I don't believe, can make. That's a, that's a private, privately-owned parking lot.
But it's on the plans, I'm just asking, so.
Well, what, what's on the table right now is just talking about the directions in the, in the alley.
I, I guess my understanding what's on the table is a special use permit in order to allow this property to have a drive-through. And I guess my question to, my question to staff is what level of specificity do we have to get into where exactly that is located? Or are we just generally, generally allowing a drive-through? Or do we have to have the specific plan outlined as to where it's located?
Well, I think the original special use permit applied for the, it specified the, the drive-through in the, on the, in the alley.
That's not, it's not in the ordinance language, so.
...and operating a restaurant drive-through for a definite period of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was in the, in the materials, clearly, and as, as was the...
But that's where my question is, because it's not codified in the actual statute that we're voting on. So what level do we have to have that hashed out right now?
I, I guess I would ask Mr. Young. I presumed that all the, the supporting documents...
The, the special use permit that's being approved includes the site plan that was submitted. And changed the site plan would require further council approval.
Okay.
So that includes a, a, a drive-through window on the, in the alley.
So if they moved that, correct, that would require subsequent approval by council.
So if they did an ordering board in the parking lot, but a pickup window in the alley, it's the same thing?
Yeah. I, I don't believe where the ordering board is located, it was part of the site plan.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Dr. Steve Stovall, professor of entrepreneurship, small business management at CMO. I'm also on the board of Old Town Cape. Speaking today in favor and support of and recommending Ronis get the approval to do this. In addition to teaching entrepreneurship, I've also started eight different companies. So I intimately and personally know the challenges of trying to navigate every city, county, state, federal ordinance and rule and regulation that you can possibly do. And Grace Keen is a former student of mine, former entrepreneurship student of mine. And you know, she's, she's done nothing wrong. She's checked every bureaucratic box that she possibly could check. And it's an unfortunate situation, but I think as a city, we do what we've always done. We adapt, we compromise, we find a solution that works and we, we move forward. And so what, what I would recommend is you do vote for this, you do approve this. Because what, what message are we sending my current students? What message are we sending future entrepreneurs that even want to come to Cape and put a business? Are we a city that it's easy to do business in? Or are we a city that's difficult to do business in? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else then wishing in the, in the audience to comment? Yes, sir.
Council Leishlitt of the 2101 Woodhaven in Cape Girardeau. I own 710, 714 Broadway. You know, I, I want to tell Grace King that I think this is a great idea, but it's still putting the drive-through window, which I know is not exactly what we're voting on, but changing the direction of the alley, which is because we put the window in the drive-through. It's drive-through in the alley, I'm sorry. I mean, when you pull up...
I want to be clear. The, what we're, what's on the table right now were, were, was an amendment to, to change the direction of the, the northern half of the alleyway. But, but that pre, nothing changed about the previous, the, the initial special use permit motion.
So do you want me to speak to just the directional?
Well, what, the only change we're, we're debating right now is allowing the northern half of the alleyway to remain two-way. But everything else previously that was in the original request is, is still remains, yes.
My concern is, is that when you leave...
We'll come back to that once we, if we, we're debating this amendment right now. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine, good. Thank you. I mean, my concern with that is that the Dollar General store, that property owner has already applied to put a fence up, which was approved. I know, heard that he vacated that and is not planning to put the fence up at this time. But anytime he can block that lot off. And then when you pull out of the, the, what is now my, my lot or what the city's signed as public parking, your only option if you do this is to go north. And if you go north, it's a pretty long distance to go up there. And anybody turning off of Bellevue, coming down the alley, you're, where would you go? You're going to back up down the alley. I mean, I just feel like it's really creating a bottleneck. And right now, it works. If we had an easement from the Dollar General to say that would always be in place, it would be great. But, or if we could get two-way in the alley, either one of those options, I could totally get on board with. But when you're blocking part of the alley and you know that in the future it could be restricted, I'm, I'm very nervous about how we would get in and out of that parking lot safely.
So I, I guess I would question or counter with the fact that this is not a permanent blocking of the alley. In fact, the, the restaurant doesn't even open until 11:00 AM-ish. So in the morning hours, I, I don't, they wouldn't anticipate any drive-through customers at all. And then there, it's, I think, fair to assume that at various times throughout the day, there would be no drive-through customers. Sorry, no offense, but you know, at times there would be drive-throughs.
I'm speaking to the fact that if the, even if it's not, no drive-through there, okay? If you turn, if you're trying to turn out of that parking lot, your only option would be to go up the, up north where you have the other traffic going, coming south.
Well, you can, you can still...
You could go...
Still, there's still a one-way option south to Broadway. And, and if there's no cars there picking up food, it's still status quo, I guess, is what...
That's where I'm kind of intrigued by this whole concept of the, of using the parking lot for the stacking of the cars. Because if you do that in the correct way, you don't have to spend time in the one-way alley waiting for your food to be prepped because you can place your order, even pull up and wait because there's all kinds of innovative ways you can think of to then a red light, green light. Like, oh, it's green, I can pull around the corner. Or an intercom says, please pull around and get your order and pay for it. And then it's only a minimum of, you know, 30 seconds or a minute that you run your car, grab your food, and then go. So it wouldn't be as big of a convenience, I guess, I don't know. It's what I, I'm intrigued by that. And I know you worked on that. And I, I want to give you tremendous kudos for going to the table with this. Like, and, and, you know, and talking through potential options and just trying to think outside of the box on this, so. Yeah.
And what I was consenting to is putting the drive-through in the back of that, in the, in the parking lot, not in the alley. Just to be clear.
So would you, would your support of using the, the parking lot as kind of a drive-through lane, would that be contingent upon only having the drive-through window in the back?
It would. Unless we can get the alley north widened or we could get some type of easement through the Dollar General store. Because I think if those, either those, if the Dollar General store is cut off, it really, I mean, there's 20 spots back there. When all the businesses are full, there's a lot of traffic. When those buildings are full, you know, there's a lot of traffic back there. I mean, enough that when we had the pharmacy open, the staff could not park in the parking lot. They were parking in neighboring streets so that our customers could have access to the parking to get into the pharmacy. And right now, there are, you know, some of those buildings are empty, but that will be changing, I think. I'm confident that'll change, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Yes. Oh, several, okay. You're next.
Good evening. I'm Liz Haynes, executive director of Old Town Cape. I've spoken at the previous city council meetings regarding the Ronis franchise, sharing about how Old Town Cape has been involved up to this point. Both leading up to these meetings and since, it's been encouraging to hear the positive comments, unanimous, I should say, positive comments about the Ronis business model coming to our region. So that's been really encouraging. But this evening, I really wanted to speak about another significant part of Old Town Cape's mission, which is serving as facilitator of stakeholder conversations to move our downtown forward. To that end, since the last council meeting, I, I representing Old Town Cape have had numerous conversations with Leishlitt. I have a meeting coming up with, with Joe Zorro, Grace Keen, Brendan Tote, Brandon Beniotti, city staff and city council members. And I just want to applaud the city staff, specifically Trevor Pulley and Kenny Haskin, Ryan Shrimplin, as well as the city council members for your hard work to explore alternate scenarios. Several different ideas were considered and talked about. But ultimately, obviously, I don't know what the final outcome will be this evening, but I do want to share that I felt it was encouraging that all parties have been willing to compromise and consider alternate arrangements to some extent. Something that Dan Presson said at the last city council meeting that truly resonated with me... with me, he said something to the effect of, "We are living in a TikTok world in an environment built for horse and carriages." I think this is brilliant and very, a very accurate statement about Main Street communities across the country. Downtown Cape Girardeau is a great American Main Street award-winning community, which is a very prestigious award, granted only to best-practice Main Street communities. So being a national leader means that we sometimes have to have difficult conversations and we have to make tough decisions. The most successful people and the most thought-provoking leaders have the ability to think outside the box and come up with compromises. So regardless of the outcome this evening, I just want to share my thanks to everyone involved to give this project so very much time, deliberation, and effort. So, thanks to everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening. Grace Keen, 1112 Meadow Lane. I just want to speak on behalf of the idea that Lee had mentioned of putting the drive-through window and the kiosk or message order board in the back of the building. The only reason that, we have considered this. I want to put that out there, that we are open to any consideration and ideas. We have considered this. The only reason we don't see it viable is with the current layout that we have set for operational purposes, it will not work. We would have to have our main, what we call a MAC expert, is the people that make the food on the line, would have to prepare the food, get the drink, and anything that they order. They would then have to walk it through the prep kitchen, which I'm sure there are some health violations and stuff there. I have not looked into that, so I'm not positive, but you'd have to walk it through our whole prep kitchen and then pass our break room to reach what would be, where the window would be. So in order for this to work, we would have to completely rearrange our layout, which would then set us back several months in reconstructing everything that we've worked on. It would also include a tremendous cost, which quite frankly, we just don't have. We've invested a lot into this project already. We've invested a lot into downtown Cape already. And we want to keep going. We would love to see this through. But with that presentation and the current space we're able to work with, it would not operationally work. In order to consider that, we again, would have to have our architect completely redo everything. That would include an architect cost. One of the main walls that used to be the exterior wall of the pre-existing building would need to come down in order for that to be completely remodeled to work with that situation. Pricey. Very costly. And then with the drive-through being in the back, we would also have to consider different marketing materials and different ways to promote and make sure people can see the drive-through and know that it's back there per our franchise. Our franchise owner has, you know, spoken on this, saying, "How are they going to know it's there?" Lee and I spoke about potentially a mural on the side, signage, you know, we have many creative ideas that cost money, that we don't have more of. So it's a matter of making sure that this can fit in our budget, in our investment budget with, you know, we're still open to considering the idea, it's just a matter of we are not going to be able to fund it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Okay. Well, counsel, oh, I'm so sorry.
My name is Jen Wilfong. I live at 520 Broadway, and I work for Athena Property Services as the leasing coordinator. If you want an example of how an alleyway, I live along one on Broadway, can be parceled off, you can look at Annie Laurie's and the fence that was put up there on one side of that alley. And then on the other side, Discovery Playhouse also put up a fence, making it difficult for 510 Broadway to do their renovations. They actually have to trespass into a back parking lot as well. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Oh, okay.
Additionally, I spoke with the daughter of the woman that passed away on Friday, and it is a dangerous alleyway, this one that is in contention. And I don't see this proposal helping matters in any way, shape, or form. You said that Grace had done everything that she could, had done it well and right. That might be the case, but what I think that she's asking is illegal. You can't make an alleyway a drive-through. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. One, yeah.
Do I need to reintroduce myself?
No.
Okay. So I just want to speak on the safety aspect. With making the left turn, what would proposably be a left turn onto the alley to get to Broadway, to go south, I personally think it would almost be safer, because then the drive-through traffic is slowing that. What people are considering such a dangerous alley right now, accidents, tragedy is happening right now with it being two-way. I almost feel like adding in a slow or a buffer and a do not enter it one way and a right turn only would almost make that safer. It would slow people down, people are getting their food and then needing to stop to, because they can only go one direction. So it's causing less interference of where people are going onto Broadway, so there's less chance of a collision there, because you're only going the one way. And then as you're coming, if, this is saying if the line were to snake through the back parking lot, you're adding that buffer there. And like you guys said, if it's a light or something that says, hey, you can now enter the alley to go get your food, it's ready. Even if it's just some stopping point or a sign or a speaker that said that, it's now causing a buffer instead of that just being completely open to cars zooming through both ways. So I almost feel it would be safer.
Thank you. All right. Well, I don't, we're not going to get into too much of a tit-for-tat back and forth, but you disagree. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience with a different opinion? Okay. Well, counsel, we've already got this amendment on the table. Any further discussion?
I'd like to, well, a couple of things I want to ask. Trevor, isn't the blue on the map entrance ways to the alleyway? Is that correct to say that, is that the way?
You have two different, so the blue lines on Bellevue, that's your public parking on the street, same thing as on Ellis. Then the blue lines from Ellis and Sprig Street are private entries into the alley area itself. So you have the one coming up Sprig in between the two buildings, which you, vehicles can get in between there, that's a private one. Then you have other private entries into the alley on Ellis Street and Ellis at the back of Dollar General also.
And those public, I mean, people from the public can go through those ways to-
They are now, but they are private entry, private entrances and exits.
You said they are?
They are private. They're private, that people right now using, use it as they think it's public, but they are private entrance and exits.
I'll just say, I'm sorry.
I just want to get some, I'll let you go first, and I just want to get some clarification, because we're talking about a lot of amendments and different things. I want to get some clarification on exactly what we're voting on here before we vote on it.
Well, the amendment, what's on the table right now is an amendment to the original issue we discussed two weeks ago. And the, really, the only change was to allow for two-way traffic to occur on the northern half of the alleyway.
So it's just an amendment to the original proposal?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, the only change, so all of that from the former, from the first issue we discussed two weeks ago, remains. But the amendment proposed is that we allow, because initially, that made this entire alleyway one-way. And so the amendment now on the table is to allow for two-way, as it always has been, on the northern half of the alleyway. So that is what we need to vote on first, and then we would go back to the original Did that answer your question? Okay.
Well, Mayor, if you don't mind. I just want to say is that we have to work toward a compromise. It may not be the best compromise thus far, but is it helping things to be progressive? And so we looked at it as a council and say, hey, let's table it. The staff went back and did real diligent homework, okay. We tried this, we tried this, we tried this. It's an old town Cape, new town Cape in a new city. One thing I do like about it is that the one-way is just residential, is just commercial property. So people not doing nothing but going in and out, in and out, in and out. When it start to be two-way, if you're trying to get home and you can, you know, you can go either which way to be able to do that. And so in order for us to grow and to make changes, we have to compromise. Now, the way the city is operating, if there is confusion in the near future, I can see Dr. Haskin and Trevor said, you know what? We need to reevaluate what is going on here and make some changes. But the best-case scenario for change to happen and the different diligence they have been doing to get this done will take us to one step. We don't have to stay at this step, but let's take a step. Let's go ahead and start working with other entities so our city could be able to grow. Now, we realize, like Dan said, which I like that quote, other things like this going to happen. So this going to set a precedence. There are a lot of alleyways. Somebody drove me through all my alleyways, I think, in South Cape today. So, so there's things that need to be changed, and we need to start making changes. And I believe this is the best step-one scenario to start making change towards progress. Now, when we got TTF funds and different things like that, we're going to start refocusing, like, okay, are we going to have more drive-throughs in downtown Cape? Are we going to have bigger businesses in downtown Cape? We have to start thinking progressive to be able to do that. And if this becomes to, that this is congested, Dr. Haskin, could we revisit it again if that seems to be a problem for step two?
Yes.
And so that's my thought on that. I wasn't sure before, but the effort that has been made to have somewhat of a compromise, that the residential still can go either which way, but the commercial moving along anyway, it will in some way try to take us a step forward in being progressive in our downtown. So that's my thought in regards to that.
I'll just add, I was very interested and appreciative of a lot of the ideas and the interest in trying to come up with different solutions. I went to this parking lot this weekend, especially when hearing that there was an idea percolating about maybe moving the drive-through to the back of the building. And quite frankly, I just, I wanted to see for myself how that, how that might work. I will say, as I pulled up upon the back of the building, as if I were going to pick up some food, I then could not turn left onto the alleyway, because my car was just too long. I had to back up like four different times and do a 17-point turn and then proceed. So I, I just think that's a logistical issue that's, that's going to be a real problem with that, with that concept. And obviously, to make that somehow work would, I think we can all envision, would require a lot of expense on the part of the property owner and perhaps the restaurant owner. So I just wanted to add that. Any other discussion, counsel, on the amendment?
I just want to just echo what I think some of the other individuals said up here that just, and thank all parties that are involved, and especially city staff and Dr. Haskin, and especially assistant manager Trevor Pulley, for really going above and beyond to try to help all parties involved, try to come up with an out-of-the-box innovative solution to this. I think what we've come to is the fact that there, you know, I think I held out a hope that there would be this ideal scenario or ideal solution for all parties involved. And it's, I've come to the realization that that, I don't think that exists. So now the decision in front of us is what do we do for the best of the city and for the best of downtown? And, you know, I think about it from the property owners who brought their concerns, legitimate concerns forward. I think about it from the Keens as investors and entrepreneurs looking to put in a good, trendy, destination-type establishment here in our downtown and move it forward. And then I think about downtowns in general, like I said last council meeting, and there are benefits to living downtown, and then there's the fact that you live in a downtown. And you, there are pros and cons of that, and benefits and inconveniences. Like Mr. Stovall said, it's, there are inconveniences that exist to living in a vibrant downtown. In fact, many lively downtowns that you go to, I can't think of very convenient things that exist for driving in downtown. And that's what we're talking about, is traversing in a car and what is convenient in this. And so it's not very convenient, but I guess I tend to be on a glass-half-full scenario versus just looking at the negative of this. And you can approach this and just look at how this could negatively impact. But I think if this establishment is a success, I think all of the property owners are going to benefit from this being a success. And this, this could be any number of other things that could go into this property, but it's, a franchise that is gaining steam, it's, that's getting a large presence, it's going to be a destination, it's in a college town, the college kids, my kids that are in college and just graduated college know all about it and are excited about it. It has that type of draw and appeal. And so I just, you know, I hope that we as a downtown can look past some of the inconveniences, realize that we've all made concessions and compromises to try to help make this happen downtown and retain, not only downtown, but Cape in general, to have a reputation of being business-friendly for new business entrepreneurs and investors that want to come and invest money in our downtown, because we have not always had that. But then also be respectful to those individuals that are longstanding property owners and business owners currently. And how do we move forward as a city and make the most of a situation that is going to cause some inconveniences? But hopefully, at the end of the day, it's a rising tide that raises all ships, so.
I'd just like to point out again, and I know this will come up, but planning and zoning approved this unanimously as far as having the drive-through on the alley. And Old Town Cape is supportive of this, and Old Town Cape has done a fantastic job with development in the downtown, and we have benefited a lot. And I put a lot of stock in what P&amp;Z said and what Old Town Cape says. I think they're very representative of the downtown, and I don't believe Old Town Cape would voice support for a project that they thought would be detrimental to the downtown. So I am for it.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel?
Mayor, real quick, may I ask one question?
Would you please approach the, yes.
My name is Joe Zaru, and I live at 612 Dever's Crossing. I'm still concerned and confused as to where you guys are trying to put the drive-through lane, because I heard Lee Schlitt say, if you proceed forward, he won't let it get put where it was proposed. So it's not going to go on Lee's property, is that right, Lee? So it's not going to be a change. Actually, Mr. Tote refused to compromise at all. We asked them, will you bring us ideas?
I don't think, I don't think you can speak for anyone else right now, Mr. Zaru.
But my question is, what are you voting on? Because it's the same then as the first time, right?
Well, we're vote, with a change. Right now, we're voting on an amendment to allow two-way traffic to continue in the northern half of the alley.
That was on the last one. I think you should review it.
No, thank you. I've reviewed it- I've, I've reviewed it plenty. Appreciate that. So, counsel, we have a, an amendment to, as I just said, to allow two-way traffic to remain in the northern half of the alley. Do you have any other comments?
I'm just still a little confused. If the original amendment was voted down, it would be irrelevant to vote on the amendment?
Nothing's been voted down.
Okay, so you, you, you've amended the original to be the original amendment, just adding this.
Yes.
Right? I just want to make sure there's not going to be two votes?
There are going to be two votes.
Okay. Explain to me what those votes are then.
Okay. The first, the vote right now would be for the amendment, which allows two-way traffic to remain in the northern half of the alleyway. Because the original bill stated that the entire alleyway would be one-way. That was what was on the table.
Okay, that's what I understood, but I guess my question is, what would be the point of voting on the amendment to it if the original bill failed?
It didn't. It hasn't.
I know, it has to be voted on.
I know, but we have to vote on an amendment first. This is simply procedure.
You have to vote on an amendment.
Hey, talk to General Robert if you have a problem with it. I'm just trying to go by proper procedure.
I understand that, and I understand procedure.
Okay.
But I guess I have a question in that same vein.
This is how we handle amendments. We have to deal with the amendment first and then go back to the amended, and then vote on the amended.
So my question, my question would be going to Robert's Rules of Order. If we amend the current proposal and then we approve such proposal as amended, that would be our first reading of the amended proposal. Do we then have to go through a second and third at a subsequent meeting? Or do we do first, second, and third, and then that requires a unanimous vote?
No. This is, this is a resolution.
Or a resolution?
Yes.
But no, that's, no, it's because it's, this is the second and third that we have right now.
And I asked that question last week as well.
We're amending the second and third. But as amended, that doesn't change the fact that it's, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, this has been, yeah. Okay. That's, I had the same question.
Sorry, Mayor, I was just a little confused. I don't, it, it didn't make a lot, it does not make a lot of sense to me that you would do that, but I understand.
I understand that, too. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. And what we're voting on, again, is to amend, is the amendment, basically to allow two-way traffic to remain on the alleyway, on the northern half of this alleyway. All in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. So now we go back to Bill 24-101, which in its amended form states that an ordinance granting a special use permit to Keen Mac LLC for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a restaurant drive-through at 716 and 718 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri with the one amendment that we just approved. That is on the table, correct, Mr. Young? Yep. So I think we're, unless there's any further discussion? Well, there's, there's been a, there, previously, there was a, a second to it.
No, we have, it was removed from the consent, and that's why we have to consider it individually.
Well, we, we did that the meeting before. I'm sorry, Mr. Young, if you, do we need a?
I believe there was an original motion and a second.
Yes.
Correct.
There was. There was. So we just strictly vote. All in favor then of what I just said? Please say aye.
Does the audience get a chance or no? On this or no? I'm just saying, proceed, really.
Well, it's, I, I think we've had that.
I just, it's like offering it up.
Okay. All right, counsel, all in favor then of Bill 24-101 as amended? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, the motion carries. We'll move on to new ordinances. If, we can pause for a minute if folks would like to run away quickly. All right, we'll resume. It's a, it's a, a lot cooler in here now. The temperature just dropped about three degrees. Okay. All right, we have some new ordinances as always and, and what we just saw. If anyone in the audience wishes to have some questions or concerns, you, you will have several minutes to do that. So we'll just proceed. First is Bill 24-113, an ordinance granting a special use permit to Derek and Carla Cornelius for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a billboard at 3849 Business Park Place in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. This is the first reading. Mr. Shrimple.
Good evening. This special use permit has been issued before, but the applicants let it expire, so they're just reapplying again. This is out at the, the former business park. The business is SIO3, so they're applying to get the permit again to be able to build a billboard on the property.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to discuss this? All right, seeing none then, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 24-113?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor then of Bill 24-113? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 24-114, an ordinance approving the record plat of Neasel Shed Subdivision. It's the first reading.
This is a residential parcel consisting of two lots. The owners want to construct a, an accessory structure on the vacant lot, and they need to make it one lot in order to do that.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to appear on that? Seeing none, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 24-114?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question, Mr. Shrimple. On, I was looking at the, the plat, the map of, of this particular, it almost looks like the property is into the driveway of the adjacent property. Is that right? I don't know.
Yeah, I, I thought the same thing, and I was trying to, it's in my ward.
You're looking at the, the map?
Yeah, the map. It looked like the property line was in the driveway of the adjacent property.
I believe that probably is the case. You know, of course, the map doesn't perfectly align with the drawn, the imagery doesn't perfectly align with the vector, what they call the drawn or vector stuff. So there's a little bit of margin of error, but sometimes, yeah, the, the driveways do fall within the property line.
Okay.
And it looked like there must have been, was there ever a structure in that property?
I think there was a house on there.
Yeah, there was, yeah.
I think it was condemned and demolished, I think.
All right, thank you. Where are we? It's been second and, okay. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor then of Bill 24-114? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 24-115, an ordinance approving the record plat of Lutheran Home Southwest Subdivision. It's the first reading.
This is property owned by the Lutheran Home. They're combining several tracts into one lot in order to build some additional homes for their campus.
Anyone in the audience wishing to appear? Seeing none then, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 24-115?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Bill 24-115? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 24-116, an ordinance annexing land located at 3082 County Road 620 into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading.
This is a property on County Road 620 across from the Jehovah's Witness Kingdom Hall. They're wanting to build a new structure on there, and they want city utilities. They've submitted their annexation petition, and the public hearing was held previously.
All right. Anyone in the audience wishing to appear on this? Seeing none, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 24-116?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor then of Bill 24-116? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 24-117, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by zoning newly annexed property located at 3082 County Road 620 as M1 Light Manufacturing Industrial District. It's the first reading.
So the proposed building is kind of an office slash storage area for plumbing and mechanical equipment. So looking at that proposed use as a future land use map from the comprehensive plan, we felt that M1 was the most appropriate zoning district.
Anyone in the audience wishing to comment? Seeing none, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 24-117?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor then of Bill 24-117? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 24-118, an ordinance extending the boundaries of Ward 4 to include property newly annexed into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading.
This just brings the annexed property into the ward.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? All right, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 24-118?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of Bill 24-118? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 24-119, an ordinance, an ordinance annexing land located at 3268 Perryville Road into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading.
This is a single-family home. They just want to get on city utilities.
Anyone in the audience wishing to comment? All right, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 24-119?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Bill 24-119? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 24-120, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by zoning newly annexed property located at 3268 Perryville Road as R1 Single Family Suburban Residential District. First reading.
Since it's a single-family home, we're recommending R1 Single Family.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 24-120?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Bill 24-120? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And lastly, Bill 24-121, an ordinance extending the boundaries of Ward 4 to include property newly annexed into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. It's the first reading.
Just brings it into Ward 4.
All right. Woo!
Ward 4 is on the rise.
Ben, we're gonna.
All right. Anyone in the audience? Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 24-121?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? I think we've seen some very efficient government at work here in the last five minutes. Look at all that we've accomplished.
You've added population and boundary to the city of Cape Girardeau. That's all, that's, that's fantastic.
I will have to say, I did look.
Welcome to the city of Cape Girardeau.
I did look up at the clock and go, that lasted two hours? It hasn't been set back with the time change.
No. All right, all in favor of Bill 24-121? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We had two, excuse me, well, three appointments, two different board appointments tonight. First, there were two spots on the golf course advisory board ballot. Those selected were Janet Escher and Josh Parham. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Janet Escher and Josh Parham for those two spots?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor then of Janet Escher and Josh Parham? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations to them. And we had one spot open on the tree board. That person selected is Jonathan Notch. Is there a motion to approve Jonathan Notch for the tree board?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor then of Jonathan Notch? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries as well. Congratulations to him. We did not have anyone sign up to appear for a comment tonight.
You have a point. ABC clerk.
Oh.
Other business.
For some reason, I was thinking that was coming up at the next one. Okay. Well, can we simply, sorry. Can we simply, is it a simple motion of, of nominating? Is there, is there a nomination for, let me make sure I get the, the name right, for Tracy Weissmuller? Am I saying?
So moved.
Second.
For the deputy clerk position. There's a second. Any further discussion? I'd like to say welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you there. All right, all in favor then of Tracy Weissmuller in that position? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And lastly, we need to set the 2025 calendar year regular city council meetings. I don't have a list before me, but is, is there a motion to approve the meetings as scheduled?